What's introduction? Well, there's a public hearing. Introduction to public now. We've covered a lot, I think, a couple of areas. Are we on? We're good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and state this meeting is being held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, PDL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. It was properly noted, has been posted and certified by the clerk. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Please join me with Black's move. But the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, neither is law, but the routine and justice for all. Please join me in a moment, Tom, for Lieutenant Kelvin, she'll follow. Thank you. May we report, Tom? Start with you.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that tomorrow evening, actually late afternoon into evening, three to seven P M., the Center for Prevention will be at the Community Center. The All Cancer Support Group, they needed to take a little bit of a break this month, but they will return on September twelfth, and I'll give reminders before that comes. On August twenty-fourth, I just want to point your attention to Zoo Fall Health. They are offering dental and medical insurance, I'm sorry, dental and medical benefits and visits. It would be for established care, it's not an urgent care, but they do have a mobile unit that is willing to come to town to town. And people, whether you have insurance or not, near the poverty level, or if you've just lost your insurance for whatever reason, they are offering dental and medical insurance on a sliding schedule, a sliding fee. They said most visits for either medical or dental are around forty dollars, so it's very affordable. They also, if you establish care with Zoo Fall, you will get free vaccinations, boosters, COVID monkeypox, and whatever else. Well, child visits, child vaccinations, but first they need to see that there's an interest here in town. So on August twenty-fourth, they will be at the Community Center. They'll have a table set up out on the sidewalk. And they will, and if people show an interest, they will establish medical care for you through them. And like I said, if you have, even if there is no income, and there's nothing to base a sliding scale fee on, then your visits will be zero. But this is something that people without insurance or people living near the poverty level can have access to decent medical care and dental health care as well. So tell everyone, tell your friends, August twenty-fourth, the Packon Community Center, Zoo Fall will have a booth set up there with information, depending on public interest or feedback. If we get that positive feedback, that people want this, then we can have the mobile unit come into town like once, twice a month. And then this way, people wouldn't have to go up to the county. So that will be coming up. That will be in tandem with the Center for Prevention as well on the same day from three to seven P M. So August twenty-fourth, Zoo Fall and Center for Prevention, from three to seven at the Community Center. And I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Brad, you're up.
You're welcome.
Mayor, just have a couple of things to mention. Tonight, we are addressing our northerly ordinance that set forth an escalating scale of fines. It's a little different than probably what might be in the package right now, but that's a change in that that I'm sure they, our B A, will probably discuss later. Also, a few correction in the ice retardant systems that we can address tonight at the appropriate time as well. I would like to thank everyone who came out for last Sunday's Taco Plaza, as it was well attended, enjoyed by all. And a sincere thank you to all of our first responders who put on a great national night out last night. In addition to the emergency vehicles and helicopter present, the crowd was able to meet with various groups ranging from our search and rescue group to our safely back home coordinator. And I'd like to give a special thanks to go out to our community police officer Taylor getting there for orchestrating such a fun night last night. And I just want to mention on a sad note, I just want everyone to be aware that we have lost two individuals in two separate drowning incidences on the lake over the last few weeks. One was seventy-six and one was eighty. So I just wanted everyone here to be careful when you go out on the water. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Brad, you're up.
I'm your pass.
Chuck. Yeah, I'm your up.
Thank you. From the Environmental Commission, they thought about, they're looking to be at the marketplace, perhaps even this Sunday. They are planning in the future to partner with the Lake Packon Foundation to do a rain barrel demonstration. Obviously to conserve water. They had some conversation about the forest management in the natural area preserve area. And earlier this year, the hike that they had scheduled, which was part of the National Trails Day hike, which got canceled. They're looking to replace that now with a fall hike. Tentative date is October twenty-first, it's a Saturday, from nine to two on Cowboy Creek. It's a group, it's a group, it's about two miles long, and they'll be starting and parking from Durbin Avenue School. A couple of things not from a specific committee. One was, as Brad mentioned, the Taco Palooza. It was gorgeous day, I guess third time's charm, but it was greatly attended, and you know, there were a lot of people there. And one of the things that I noticed was there was county representation from the organization CLEAR, which is anti-drug, and they were giving away to anyone that would take them a Narcan kit, which is a good thing, as we know, O Ds are on the rise extraordinarily. And also, tagging off on Brad, the National Night Out last night went very well. Taylor did a great job. She was also one of the officers that was in the duck tank. And lastly, this Friday starts the Sussex County State Fair. And Saturday at seven o'clock is Queen of the Fair pageant. And our Ms. Packon, Kristy Brennan, will be up there competing for Queen of the Fair, and anyone who would like to go up there at seven P M. Saturday night and support her, that would be great. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. Brad, you're up.
Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, the next big event that we're hosting, we're doing, planning for is on Sunday, September seventeenth, that's Sussex County Day. We're starting to put together the ads for the Sussex County Magazine, so the ad sales have begun. And Sussex County Trail Guide can be downloaded from the website at sussexcountychamber.org. Over the Sussex County Municipal Utilities Authority, the next paper shredding event is August eighteenth.
Christine, you're up.
I'm your pass.
The mandatory report, Dave.
Yes, a report on some activities that D P W has been up to. Obviously, they've been doing some hot patch invasive repairs, there was an A D A ramp repaired at the Seaver Center. They've put in small concrete pads for the four locations for Girl Scout project. Two at Vets Field, one at the skate park, and one to Park and Ride near the hockey rink. The Scouts will have the Melonoma Foundation install some of the screen stations. And we've been busy with some emergency water repairs and some sewer blockages. And on the P F O S update at Marinewell, the pad has been poured, the scheduling of the delivery of the tanks is the next step. Tree has been removed on the back of the foundation for access for the crane, and the ground re-rated at the foundation. Once the unit is installed, the grass will be repaired and seed put down. The next item is announcement of our Phase Two paving program. We plan to have a construction of a meeting the week of the fourteenth, and we're hoping that the contractor will be able to get this paving done prior to the start of the school year. So let me just read the streets and the heights, Unger Avenue, Leo Avenue, Grove Street, Benjamin Street, Fay Avenue, in the Hill section, Vassar Trail, Tops Trail, Wellesley Trail, Main Trail, Purdue Trail, in Elba, Wildwood, Walton Road, and Bean Road, Huron Trail, Evergreen Avenue, Mohawk Avenue, Oneida Avenue, and Northwood, Mohawk Road, Nybert Road, Oakdale Trail, and Coulter Place. So the total tonnage that this project will ensue for Phase Two is six thousand three hundred and eight tons of asphalt. And your hangers and all of the appropriate notifications will go out between the construction meeting and before the start of the meeting. And that's what I have for the meeting tonight, Mayor.
Right, the grant report.
Oh, yes. Our grant writer has notified us that the grant for the U S May Sanctuary has been not awarded this year, and encouraged us to apply in future years.
No pro forma motion, public comment, I have the motion to open the meeting to the public for public comment.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
An opportunity given to the public for commentary. Comments are limited to one comment of no more than five minutes. Welcome.
Rachel Rodriguez, Ninth Island Drive. So I know there were two N C A grants, I'm sorry, two grants that we had applied for regarding Northwood, so that wasn't known, just one of them, or no for both of them?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And I also just quickly want to thank the Police Department, Fire Department, E M S for the National Night Out. I love seeing the kids faces when they see their superheroes live in person, so that community interaction is fantastic. And so, so ahead, thank you.
Thank you. More public?
Good evening, Clifford London, East Sky Top Road. Two things. One, I wanted to thank you for the anticipated introduction of ordinance eighteen twenty-three later this evening to increase the noise penalties on the lake. There have been some improvements in this past month. As soon as the Marine Police boats go into the code, the noise stops. Police boats have been there much more frequently, but an increased penalty on the noise violations will definitely help. Secondly, I just wanted to follow up on last month's meeting in which you adopted the ordinance relative to rights of ways and parking. Immediately after the ordinance, the meeting, I submitted to you guys on behalf of the Nola Club, a draft ordinance to restore the no parking provision to that section of Sky Top Road, and I just wanted to make sure that you received it and would urge your favorable consideration. Thank you.
More public?
Ladies first.
Boy, you're coming.
Jennifer Johnson, Six Nerita Con app. I'm going to start off by saying that I do not want sewer rates going up after I fought so hard to get them lowered, but I noticed that you're introducing an ordinance to lower the sewer rates by fifteen dollars a quarter to two seventy a quarter. While I, as a sewer customer, will always appreciate lower costs, I am wondering if that's the responsible choice right now. At the July fifth meeting, the auditor made a presentation including the sewer budget. When Councilman Hoppercam asked about the fund balance and the decrease of rates, the auditor said that since some of the debt is falling off at the end of this year, quote, "We're going to wait and see until the end of this year, and thankfully, there is enough fund balance that we can wait and see how that reduction and expense plays out into the fund balance," end quote. Councilman Schindler then made a comment about looking forward toward the future and making sure there's enough in the fund balance for maintenance and future costs. Knowing that you have a nine million dollar balloon payment toward the end of one of the loans, and lowering the rates now, you are not taking the advice of your professionals whom you claim to trust. This isn't being responsible for the sewer customers and isn't showing the taxpayers that you trust your professionals who said to wait until the end of the year to lower sewer rates. A move like this sets up a potential raise in the rates in the near future. Thank you.
More public?
Hello, Dave Thompson, Tony Thompson, one for Packon. Just some easy questions, kind of terminology type questions. If you go down to the partially vacating Allendale Road and Parade Way, Allen. There's some question about whether the township owned Allendale Road. Do they own, do you own Allendale Road?
I'm going to be addressing that shortly.
Okay, okay. And when you say vacant, that means like, is there any money exchanged or anything?
Not for vacation.
Okay. And then when you were talking about, you know, road systems and stuff like that, it would be very nice to have the other part of Allendale Road looked at. I don't know if it's on anybody's agenda or not, but it is pretty sad shape.
For pay, yeah. So there's, our D P W superintendent has a agency that we do a street scan on an annual basis. And information from that will vary on what was could be done in a particular year. We're doing Phase One and Phase Two in twenty twenty-three because there was not paving done in twenty twenty-two because of the cost of asphalt time. So we have been able to be able to get two years' worth of paving done, hopefully by the end of August or early part of September, the goal is, as I stated in my report, to have that paving completed before the start of school season so that we're not interfering with school busing and so forth. So we'll take a look. I'll ask the superintendent to give me an update on Allendale Road.
Okay, that's all we ask for. Okay, thank you very much.
More public?
Hi, David Harris. I'm just wondering, with this upcoming bond collection in September for the school system, does the Borough Council have any input or thoughts about it, whether it's meritorious or not?
No.
No? Okay. Is, in the presentation that the superintendent gave, he said that the average assessment for a property in a Packon is two hundred and fourteen thousand. Is that accurate?
I cannot address that because you're at the wrong meeting, David.
No, I mean, you know what the assessment, you have an idea of what the average assessment is in a Packon, that has nothing to do with.
The average house value?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay, but whatever that means, yes.
Yes. Okay, because according to the speech, the taxes would only go up two hundred dollars on average for the average homeowner.
Of course, you know my opinion on raising taxes.
Yes.
Okay. Enough said.
Okay, thank you.
Public? Then motion to break it back?
Okay, second.
All in favor? All right, we're back. And we answered most of the questions. The court will address the, will address the ordinance, especially with the ice thing we have made. We've addressed that, thank you. The sewer rates were careful review. You're entitled to your opinion, I'm entitled to mine. The auditor, we've had conversations about that, it's not done carelessly. You might infer that, but it's not. So we were very careful when we made that decision with the auditor and CFO. We've looked at the finances carefully, and we are going to reduce the sewer rate. This is the introduction night, it'll be based next week. Anytime we can make the town affordable, we need to go the extra mile and try to reduce any and all costs that the town curbs, the municipality curbs, not the counties, not the schools, no. We're responsible for our municipal effect on your wallet, and anything we can do to help that, we will certainly do. And if it requires some effort on our part, then we're going to do that effort. But the effort is not just to disregard it. People, if you don't know, the interest rate just went up, so the price of pork is going up again, and that's never good, and we need to be cognizant of that. So anything and everything we can do, even though it's not a big number, it's a number. And it, the model is to take us in the right direction, which is not to increase that, so hopefully that, but we don't do it carelessly. We do it carefully. Dave, I wish I could answer your questions, but you're at the wrong meeting. I have an opinion, but it has nothing to do with this elected body or that. Okay. Wow. We're good. Thank you. Approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the seven nineteen twenty twenty-three.
One minute, second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Sting.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one twenty-four to Bill's list.
Does anyone need anything discussed or removed? I'm hearing or seeing any man or move Bill List in his entirety, second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Introduction, ordinance eighteen twenty, oh, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion on the consent, we do have one.
Sorry.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance introduction, ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the Borough of Packon, County of Sussex, stating that New Jersey modifying chapter one sixty-seven seventeen violations and penalty. Council, you want to address that?
You want me to, yeah. Mayor, this was proposed originally as a fine a lot less than two hundred hours and not more than two thousand hours. In consultation with the Chief of Police and our municipal prosecutor, they have made a recommendation that we modify this to read as follows. Excuse me, the first paragraph, each and every person violating any provisions of this chapter shall upon conviction thereof be punished punishable by a fine of one hundred dollars for a first offense, two hundred dollars for a second offense, a fine of, at the discretion of the magistrate, not less than three hundred dollars nor exceeding two thousand dollars for a third or more offenses. And the rest of the language will be staying as it was proposed in the rest of that paragraph. And again, that is at the suggestion of the prosecutor and the chief of police.
So that's what will be on the final reading when we have the public here.
I'm making a motion. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the Borough of Packon, County of Sussex, state of New Jersey, replacing section one eight-six dash nine A of code of the Borough of Packon. Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
To the final hearing, ordinance sixteen twenty twenty-three, partially vacated portion of Allendale, Allendale Road, right away.
One minute, yes.
Ms. Mayor, if I could have before you get to the motion, newer information has been received by the Borough in regards to some issues that need to be researched by legal counsel in regards to this proposed ordinance. It's been recommended that the council adjourn the second reading and public hearing till a future meeting.
One minute to table.
Call the roll.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes, table.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, to table.
And then Mr. Young.
Yes.
Okay, hit the tables until we get the right answer. Ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-three, ice retardant system, an ordinance of the Borough of Packon, County of Sussex, state of New Jersey, to replace chapter one thirty-seven, ice retardant system.
Second.
Again, if I can have more, Mayor. We had, the Borough had received some comments about the ordinance, and I've reviewed it with legal counsel. There are a few changes that are scribe reserves that, and clarification that are minimus and can be amended into the motion before the public hearing enacted on tonight. Under block headline, the sentence would read, "The high watermark of ten point three zero feet in gauge height" as recorded at Lake of Packon State Park, or the line established by the Bureau of Navigation, State Department of Environmental Protection, defining the lake's permanent shoreline. In, on page two, one thirty-seven two E, that is a numbering correction. So that would read, unless the ice retardant system has been designed and approved in accordance with section one thirty-seven dash four, rather than dash six. And the final is on the third page, one thirty-seven dash five, enforcement violations and penalties. And that is basically striking out the construction official and noting that the complaint would be received enacted upon by the zoning official.
Is it okay to move with that, Congress? So we call roll with them changes? Okay, right over to the public.
Good evening, Clifford London, here in the Sky Top Road. I thank you for listening to the ordinance. I'm fully in support of the changes you've made, and in fact, in fully comply with murder course. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, please.
Mayor, the important find is a little bit fair about its information is that hopefully this will be shared by all the three other towns on the lake, and that's what is the goal in the Lake of Packon Commission, and this particular ordinance is going to copy this.
As usual, we set the working law. Okay, call the roll.
Yes.
Any more public? Hearing up? Has today the motion to close the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're closed. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one two five, approval of the two thousand twenty-two vote app contribution list.
So move. Second, second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one twenty-six, authorizing chapter one five-nine for D O two, D O T funding for paving of Unger and Leo. Call the roll.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one twenty-seven, rejecting all bids for the water surface J Z equipment.
So move, second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Any business? I don't have much to say.
You're looking at the clock.
No, really. This week, last weekend, we had the opening of the Second Smile House in town. And for those of you that don't know, Smile is probably one of the best organizations for young people with special needs you could probably ever wish for and have. So we've opened a second house for that. It was very nice, it's very important. Right now, I'm still talking to people about maybe a third house. So that's still a work in progress, but it would be, it would be very helpful, particularly for young ladies. These two houses are for young men, and they're also young ladies with special needs of the same category, and I think we need to pay attention to that too, which we are. So that's still a conversation we're having. It's very important for our town. National Night Out was great, and in a sense, it's really great because people get out, but more importantly, people get to meet police, fire, emergency, search, our scouts, safely back home, and they get to meet them when it's not an emergency. And they get to meet them when they're not getting a ticket or not getting a band drawn. But it is very positive, it's one of the greatest things we could do for our town amongst the other stuff that we do also. But I think it was really nice, Lala Paloo, it was great. Don't forget the State Fair, we will be represented there, we'll have Ms. Packon there. She's really pretty nice. Ms. Paccon there, she's really pretty nice. She's got a shot, in my opinion, at least she has, my ability. We'll have another display as usual in the building where all the towns have the displays. We had a wonderful car show, actually two car shows along with the market. And so that went over really, really well. But the point I'm making here is that we, our town does a lot, and the people do a lot. And it's all the people, not just some of the people. We have some people that can coordinate, facilitate, and plan, but it really comes down to just the people coming out. It's not white knuckle, it's really nice. People have a good time, we have lovely weather, hopefully that will continue. And we're going to continue doing this. So the conversation about more car shows going on. They had actually a K-9 Car Club, had an adoption thing with that, and it's really nice. Didn't have a Jack Russell that I'd went home with a dog. But anyhow, it's really nice, it's good for the animals, it's just good for the people. It just, what we do is just generally good for the town. And we're going to keep on doing that. So thank you for coming. I want to take the motion to adjourn.
So may.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.